Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Council Member Brinker Harding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon. I'll just touch on a real inspiring event that I went to last Friday night at the Fire Union Hall. It was a kind of a viewing of a show called the, it's called Returning the Favor. It was about Drew Gurken, one of our firefighters, who has a project called Furniture Project that takes donated goods and distributes them to needy families. And anyway, it was very inspirational. I'll just close by saying, wash your hands.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us here today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, in order to facilitate the conduct of our business, we ask that you turn off or silence all electronic devices. Madam Clerk.
Items six to ten relate to the same project and can be considered together for Gold Meadows, located northwest of 50th and Bancroft Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six to eight are ordinances to rezone this property from R-435 District to DR District, R-4 District, and R-5 Urban District. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for Gold Meadows. Bees communications in opposition. Item ten, a resolution to approve the Gold Meadows subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items six through ten begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Kyle Hawsey with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, representing the applicant. The piece of property that we are discussing today is on the intersection of 50th and Bancroft Street. It's just to the west of that intersection. It is a parcel that is a little over four acres in size. It is currently zoned R-435. There is R-4 zoning with a mix of single-family and duplex units surrounding it to the north, east, and to the south. And then Bohemian Cemetery is to the west. We are requesting a rezone and plat of this property. The rezone, we have sixteen single-family lots. I guess it's fifteen single-family lots that we are replating to the R-4. We have two lots that are DR, the largest one down in the southwest corner, is for Water Quality Basin. The sixteenth lot that is being platted is an existing duplex unit. That is the reason that we are requesting the R-5 zoning instead of the R-4 zoning to meet the existing code that the city has on that lot. This is a, we would be removing the house that is shown here on the right to gain access to the lots that are, to the existing vacant area that is to the back of the property, as you can see here. That entry drive would be coming right through this area, and then the lots going in the open space that is there now. As you can see with the lots that we are proposing, they are the same size and depth of the surrounding single-family units that are existing, and they match the existing street pattern of the surrounding streets as well. With that, I'll make myself available for any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through ten are approved seven to zero. Items eleven to fourteen relate to the same project and can be considered together for Coventry, located northwest of 204th and Harrison Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items eleven and twelve are ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and MU District. Item thirteen, a resolution to approve the final plat for Coventry. Item fourteen, a resolution to approve the Coventry subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items eleven through fourteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the development and the developer, simply here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this development.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven through fourteen are approved seven to zero. Items fifteen to nineteen relate to the same project and can be considered together for Coventry Replat 12, located northwest of 204th and Harrison Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Items fifteen and sixteen are ordinances to rezone this property from DR District to DR District and R-4 District. Item seventeen, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Coventry Replat 12. Item eighteen, a resolution to approve the final plat for Coventry Replat 12. Item nineteen, a resolution to approve the third amendment to the Coventry Replat 12 subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items fifteen through nineteen begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the development and developer, here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this matter.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items fifteen through nineteen are approved seven to zero. Items twenty to twenty-three relate to the same project and can be considered together for Old Town Commons, located southwest of 204th Street and Honeysuckle Drive. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item twenty, an ordinance to rezone this property from R-4 District and DR District to MU District. Item twenty-one, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement. Item twenty-two, a resolution to approve the final plat for Old Town Commons. Item twenty-three, a resolution to approve the Old Town Commons subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items twenty through twenty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 11440 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the development and the developer, here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this matter.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. Jobin, we're about ready to invoke the RJ Brown rule on you. I'll move to approve.
No further lights, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items twenty through twenty-three are approved seven to zero. Item twenty-four, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3301 Leavenworth Street, from GI District to CC District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item twenty-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Patrick Garber, 1824 North 49th Street. I don't know what you want me to say.
You're happy to answer any questions? That's all you need to say.
Yes, if you have any questions you may have for me.
Perfect. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is approved seven to zero. Item twenty-five, an ordinance to rezone property located southeast of 23rd and M Streets, from R-7 District to NBD. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item twenty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Come on down, Mr. Hawsey.
My name is Kyle Hawsey with ENA Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road, Omaha, Nebraska, representing the applicant. The property that we are discussing this evening, this afternoon, is on the southeast corner of 23rd and M Street. It is currently zoned R-7. It has surrounding R-7 to the east, R-5 to the north is the high school. To the south, there's a mixture of NBD and R-7, and then NBD to the west as well. Currently, the lot is a mixture of an existing parking lot and a vacant lot, or a couple of vacant lots. The purpose of the rezoning is to allow for the expansion of the existing parking lot We are looking to increase with an additional, works out to be additional sixteen parking spaces to the north side of those lots. Those parking stalls will serve the learning community of Douglas and Sarpy County, which is a governmental organization that works with children and families to make sure that there is academic success without regard to social or economic needs or situation. That, the learning community of Douglas and Sarpy County is located in the northwest corner here, and they use this lot now, and they're needing to expand it. The rezone to the NBD also matches the city of Omaha's future zoning map as well. And I'll make myself available for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is approved seven to zero. Item twenty-six, an ordinance to rezone property located at 2120 South 48th Avenue, from R-435 District to R-4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item twenty-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. I'm familiar with this one. I'm comfortable with a motion to second. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is approved seven to zero. Item twenty-seven, an ordinance to rezone property located at 4252 Corby Street, from R-435 District to R-4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item twenty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is approved seven to zero. Item twenty-eight, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3206 South 71st Street, from R-2 District and CC District to GO District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees communication and support.
The public hearing on item twenty-eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Reagan Pence with Lamprey Airson, representing the client, 14710 West Dodge Road, 68154.
Thank you.
Here to answer any questions.
By the way, those mics adjust up so you don't have to hurt your back.
There you go. Are there any other proponents?
Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved seven to zero. Item twenty-nine, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Addy Sports Bar and Grill located at 101 North 10th Street.
The public hearing on item twenty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Tim and Megan Addison from Addy Sports Grill, Inc., here to answer any questions you might have.
And your address?
101 North 10th Street.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-nine is approved seven to zero. Item thirty, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Keystone Tavern located at 7821 Military Avenue.
The public hearing on item thirty begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Amanda Ransom, 14910 Mormon Street, Bennington, 68007. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So just an ownership change, right? Are you a new owner of the Keystone Tavern?
Yes.
All right. So a real popular place in the Keystone area. Do you expect any changes or business as usual?
It's business as usual. We're pushing a little more sports bars, so, yeah.
Great. Well, I'm sure they'll appreciate some new energy there, and it's been a longtime anchor for the neighborhood right there, so I wish you luck.
Thank you.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty is approved seven to zero. Item thirty-one, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Richie's Bar located at 15244 West Maple Road.
The public hearing on item thirty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Michael Parde, representing Majestic Enterprises LLC, 12671 Grand Avenue. Here to answer any questions.
Could you spell your last name, please?
P-A-R-D-E.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is approved seven to zero. Item thirty-two, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Mariscos El Colucci located at 2229 Leavenworth Street.
The public hearing on item thirty-two begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, my name is Maria Corral, and I'm the owner of Mariscos El Colucci.
Welcome.
Here to answer any questions.
And your address?
2229 Leavenworth Street.
Thank you. Did you get the last name? Would you spell your last name, please?
C-O-R-R-A-L.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. I have just a couple of questions for you. I see that you're opening this restaurant, and you want to have a liquor license there. Just wondered why you wanted to have a Class C license for off-sale versus a Class I license for consumption on-site and sale on-site?
When I was applying for this, when I went to Lincoln, they told me just to apply for it, just in any case, because we are trying to expand to the restaurant, but for now are just to sell at the location.
What I would be more comfortable with, I represent this area, and we've had some issues arise recently with the sale, off-site sale of alcohol in your immediate vicinity, is that you agree to amend to a Class I, which would allow you to sell what you wish to sell, but for consumption on-site versus package off-sale. And if in the future, you know, you want to come back and ask for permission to sell off-site with a Class C or D or B or whatever, that you come back and ask for that. Just because a packet of information we had, at our most recent information, there was some really kind of alarming conditions going on just in your neighborhood there.
Okay.
In terms of vagrants that were drinking and passing out, and it wasn't pretty, so if we could keep your restaurant so we know it's not you.
Yeah.
It's contributing to the problem. And that you, but wanting you to be successful, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Is there a motion to allow amendment to I?
Motion to allow amendment to I.
And you agree with that amendment?
Yes.
I second that. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Second, roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item thirty-three, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Okra African Grill located at 1303 South 72nd Street, Suites 101 and 102.
The public hearing on item thirty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. My name is Yao E. Hevy Doglen. I spell H-E-V-L-E-K-N-VICTOR-I hyphen D-L-E-K-N-David-O-L-E-K-Oscar-G-L-E-K-N-George-L-E-L-E-K-Larry-A-L-E-K-A apple-N-L-E-K-Nancy.
Say that ten times.
I get the same thing all the time. I'm here with Nina Soji. She's one of the co-owners of Okra African Grill located on 1301 South 72nd Streets, Street 101.
Welcome.
And would be happy to answer any questions.
Welcome to the city council.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-three is approved seven to zero. Item thirty-four, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Hyderabad House Biriani Place located at 2537 South 174th Plaza.
The public hearing on item thirty-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue. Appearing here with Sanjay. I'm not going to butcher his last name, but this is purchased out of a restaurant that's already existing. It is an upgrade to a C because they want to be able to sell some niche products from Indian products, so we're here for any other questions you might have.
Thank you. And did you wish to enter yourself on the record?
Yes.
Would you state your name and spell your last name?
Yeah. My name is Sanjay Garapati, last name spelled G-A-R-P-A-T-I.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is approved seven to zero.
Good luck.
Item thirty-five, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for Enzone Sports Grill located at 8525 Park Drive.
The public hearing on item thirty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Members of council, Joe Natz, 222 South 15th Street. Last name's N-A-A-T-Z. Here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. You got a thumbs up from the clerk for that.
I knew it was coming. Thank you.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-five is approved seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item thirty-six, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Green Belly located at 1917 South 67th Street, Suite 110.
The public hearing on item thirty-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Chad Cruz, representing Green Belly CS Cruz Corporation LLC.
And your address?
Here to answer any questions.
Your address, please.
1917 South 67th Street, Exorbin Village, Suite 110.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-six is approved seven to zero. Item thirty-seven, an application to consider a Class I liquor license for Sea Thai Restaurant located at 17903 Pierce Plaza.
The public hearing on item thirty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. President and city council, my name is Cynthia Epstein, 11516 Nicholas Street, and I am here today representing Chapora LLC, who is doing business as Sea Thai, requesting a liquor license at 17903, I think it is, Pierce Street.
Thank you. Did your client wish to enter her appearance?
My client did want to enter your appearance.
Just say and spell your last name, please.
My name is Prida. Last name is Joy Nooseng.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is approved seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearings on agenda items thirty-eight through forty-four were held on March 3, 2020. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
We had a request to remove item sixty-one. Madam Clerk, so the public hearings on agenda items forty-five through sixty begin at this time. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Pauls, Palermo, Festerson, Gray, Harding, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
The public hearing on item sixty-one will be called up as soon as the clerk reads it.
A resolution to approve a one-year extension in the agreement with EB Jacobs with the anticipated cost of testing for 2020 being $224,258.
The public hearing on item sixty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents? HR Director Deb Sanders, welcome.
Good afternoon. HR Director Deb Sanders, here to answer any questions, along with Becky Nymanley, Employment Manager.
Welcome. Is there anything you wish to say?
We would like approval of the one-year extension. We're currently in the process of doing a number of tests. Police officer is posted, fire captain is posted, battalion chief is posted. Those are testing that we have to do in order to comply with our CBA for the fire department and for the police department. We have a schedule that we use, and EB Jacobs is our current provider, and we're in, since we're in process currently with EB Jacobs, we would like to continue that. Our goal is to go out to RFP to get bids for providers. As you know, we've had IO solutions in the past, and we believe that if we open up the RFP to ask for individuals to bid on police testing and separate from fire testing or for both, we may get more individuals bidding. As you may know, last time we only had two bids, and there was only one of the two bids that actually qualified.
Thank you, and I'm sure you'll stick around and answer any questions.
Yes.
Thanks. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Come on down.
Hello. I'd like to say good morning, because I just woke up a little bit ago. I work nights, so, good afternoon. My name is Ken Fox. I'm the president of the Black Police Office Association of Omaha, and do I have to give an address?
You can give the business address.
I'll give a PO box for the organization, is that okay?
Or the address of where the organization meets.
Okay. I'll go 6012 North 102nd Street.
Thank you.
Omaha, Nebraska. All right, so do I just go into it?
Yes.
Okay, so first of all, my rank in the police department, I've been on for fourteen years, and it's the rank of lieutenant. I'm also the president of the BPOA. I want to talk a little bit about my assessment center history with the department and other departments. I've been a assessor for the OPD candidate, entry candidate process, also went through the lieutenant process as a candidate, and I was just recently a SME, subject matter expert for it. Also been an assessor outside of Omaha, too, so I've flown out to other agencies, and they've used me as an assessor to, for promotional processes. My experience with EB Jacobs, initially it was rough, it was a rough start, and I made it known. In their defense, I'll say they have been professional, and they have been open to discussions. They've just been reluctant to kind of change their work product to make it less subject, more objective, in our opinion, to be fair to the candidates. The major issues that surrounded it is the subjectivity allowed in the scoring process for the assessment center, which is seventy percent of the grade that you receive to score you on the promotional list. You have a lot of people that have prepared for this for years to try to be promoted, and just the amount of subjectivity that's been allowed has been alarming for us, and has been alarming for, uh, us, and as a assessor using, um, their product, uh, even for other assessors around us, we've voiced that we don't like the way that they, uh, score their, their, their testing. It's, it's been not favorable in our opinion. This, this, uh, uh, has been shared by the O- OPD Diversity Committee also, which is, consists of the, uh, BPOA, Black Police Association, uh, the LPOA, Latino Police Association, our, uh, Nebraska Women's Group, uh, Police Association, and the OPOA, and we've all inconsistent, uh, you know, can, inconsistent say that we're not happy with, uh, the, the testing process that has happened with E.B. Jacobs, um, in their part, and also, uh, the amount of subjectivity that's allowed into it. Uh, it's, again, like, you know, being here in the past where we had an in-house, um, testing process, uh, you know, I, I wasn't around for it, but I know there were a lot of, uh, discontent for it, and, um, not trusting it, and I just feel that their work product that they currently have allows it to seep in again, so I'm kinda hearing the same issues that we have had heard in the past when it was in-house. Uh, E.B. Jacobs, uh, has had a part in, um, violating the Palmer Consent Decree, which is a consent decree that's been put in place to make, to ensure the fairness of the promotional testing process on the Police Department. I know the City, uh, has, uh, H.R., they've done a good job of, uh, you know, saying, hey, you know, there has been some issues, and they're gonna work on fixing it. I, I totally agree with that, I totally understand and feel that they will do that, uh, but, uh, you know, the, the scars are still there, and, and we, we would just like to go on record to say that we're not, uh, okay with E.B. Jacobs just getting a blanket extension. Uh, we'd like to, you know, if you guys vote against it, I understand, I totally understand that, um, we don't have anything in place, that's an issue for me too, because we have voiced in the past that we're not happy with it, and to come to this point to not have something in place is kinda concerning, but I get it, stuff happens. Uh, if you decide to vote on it today to, uh, extend it, we just hope that, uh, we can put something in place that E.B. Jacobs comes to the table with the diverse commi- Diversity Committee, and just make it more fair and have discussions, and be willing and open to uh, look at altering some of their work product to make it more, uh, fair, or at least feel more fair, and, uh, appear to be more objective in their scoring process. As an assessor, I can tell you, e- even with this last lieutenant, um, process, I had to kinda school them on our, uh, our policies, and the scorers are actually going to score not knowing our policies. That's a problem for me when it comes to E.B. Jacobs, because how are they gonna effectively score us when they actually don't know our policies? And I actually went through a mock testing, and they scored me low on, uh, some, some behaviors that I, uh, you know, gave, and they expressed, hey, we, we scored you low because you said this, and I had to go and actually print off the policy and say, uh, it's in our policy. And, uh, so you scored me low on this, and if I wasn't here today and I didn't go print this off, you would've affected multiple candidates, uh, coming in, and you would've scored them low and been unfair to them, so, just things like that that they're not thinking of, obviously is a concern of mine. Um, there's been concerns also, uh, with, uh, their testing process, their, their incoming testing process, which I believe is twenty-four percent. Uh, we've had multiple people not pass that testing process, and these are people with college degrees, um, higher education, maybe having masters, and have studied for this written test, and they're not passing it. Uh, so that's a concern of mine also. And, uh, I'm speaking from a person that has went through the testing process, and I, I've been successful, so this is not a selfish thing for me to come in and, you know, speak bad about E.B. Jacobs, I've actually been successful. I went through E.B. Ja- uh, E.B. Jacobs process, and I got promoted to Lieutenant, so, um, but I just wanna let you guys know that. You have any questions for me?
What is it that you're asking for?
I'm asking that we vote, uh, no to, uh, extend it. I understand that's gonna be a problem, I get that, and I'm, I'm okay with that. If we vote yes to extend it, we vote yes with the understanding that we need to come back to the table for this year when it comes to policing, police testing, and go back to the table and talk about their work product to make it more subjective when it, excuse me, objective when it comes to scoring our candidates, and have that OPD, the First Committee, which consists of the OPOA, LPOA, BPOA Women's Group, and the Chief is there too, and they're all inconsistent that, that they're not happy with this process, we just go back to the table and discuss it to make it more palatable for, for us uh, on this side that knows what they're, you know, they're putting out, does that make sense?
Thank you, yes, you may, uh, sit down and, um, stick around just in case anyone has questions after the public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other opponents? Seeing none, Ms. Sanders, do you wish rebuttal time?
I can't speak to, um, Lieutenant Fox's personal experience, but I do know that E.B. Jacobs does have a vigorous validation process, and in that vigorous validation process, there, and he's correct, that, um, when, when we've had multiple choice tests, like for instance this last Lieutenant's test, we did have, uh, a higher number of individuals not pass the multiple choice and therefore not progress on to the Assessment Center, that is a true statement. Um, but they do bring to the table, uh, professional assessors that are trained, um, they are trained in how to assess candidates, not necessarily in every single detail of our standard operating procedures, um, they are familiar with them, they're made familiar with them. Um, and again, it's, uh, our intent is to go out to RFP this summer, uh, we absolutely intend to involve the Diversity Committee in the RFP process, and, but right now, uh, as I've stated, we're in the process of a number of tests, and to stop that process right now puts us behind and, and not in compliance with some collective bargaining agreements.
And in response to his statement that if approved, he would hope for the agreement of H.R. and E.B. Jacobs to meet regularly to discuss the concerns that they have, I
Absolutely, we can do that.
And I thought during the committee this morning, I heard you say that that's something that you would be doing.
Yes.
Okay, uh, is there anything else you'd like to say?
I think we said it.
Okay. Uh, the public hearing is closed, Councilmember Melton, you're recognized.
Yes, well, first, don't, don't go very far, and I'm gonna call Lieutenant Fox up as well. How many positions right now are, would be put on hold if we didn't approve this?
Three of them. Police Officer, Battalion Chief, and Fire Captain.
Okay, so there, there's three positions right now, would there be more that would be affected? Or would you be able to rebid that, rebid it this summer?
That's the hope, is that we can get it rebid and have the process done by the first part of the summer, so then that way, if E.B. Jacobs would win for say Fire, but not Police, we could continue on with E.B. Jacobs for whatever comes up for Police, or for, I'm sorry, for Fire the rest of this year. And then I know Police Sergeant is scheduled to be posted later on this year. End of this year. So then we could have whatever vendor, if it is a different vendor, in place before we start that process.
How far along in the process are you for these three positions?
Becky, you can better answer that question.
If you state your name and your position.
Yes, Rebecca Nunley, Employment Manager for the City of Omaha. So currently Police Officer is posted, um, that will be posted through, I believe, March nineteenth. Um, we've got the, uh, multiple choice exam scheduled for, um, later on this, um, month, and then we've got physical agility testing, in May, as well as structured interviews in May. We currently have, um, the Battalion Chief is posted right now, um, and we've got multiple choice, um, I believe in, in May as well, and the Assessment Center, um, in June. Police Captain was just, uh, posted, I'm sorry, Fire Captain, was just posted, um, yesterday. So that's at the very beginning of that process. But all of these processes, um, you know, we have to make sure that we're engaging subject matter experts in order to write the material, write the assessment material, and we're engaging subject matter experts from, um, from our Police Department, um, as well as from the Fire Department, depending on which position it is that's posted, in order to, um, again, write the testing materials. And so, yeah, they're, they're all in, in various stages, um, and with Police Officer, that's a huge effort right now, so, you know, we've got probably w- when, when we're, uh, all done, we'll have about nine hundred to a thousand candidates that we'll be dealing with, we've got to, we've currently got the, um, some space at U N O rented out that we'll be doing the multiple choice exam. Um, so, you know, just lots of planning, lots of things that we have to make sure that we're doing where we do engage E.B. Jacobs, um, or whatever testing, um, testing company that we use.
Well, no, but my question is, I mean, and I, and I get all that, my question is, 'cause then you say, or whatever testing, I think what the, I think what Lieutenant Fox is saying is, we would like to see a different, or at least a bid out for a different testing agency, because this one doesn't seem to be working for us, and then I heard you say, we're putting out, we're putting it out for bid.
Right.
So this company may bid on it, but other, we've had previous testing, um, I, I, I think there, I.O.S. was who we used first, who I know we were really happy with, we had them from, I think, thirteen or fourteen, um, for a number of years.
Through the end of sixteen.
Through sixteen, and, and I, I didn't, I never heard any complaints at all, um, and I was on the H.R. Committee, and we talked about it frequently, they seemed to do a good job, we have to put it out for RFP, I guess, what I'm trying, what I'm trying to balance here is, I don't wanna affect positions not getting filled, because then we'd be violating a collective bargaining agreement, which I don't see anybody here from either union, right? Okay, um, who I think would be, we could potentially have people go, no, you don't wanna violate the collective bargaining agreement, but then we have people from the other association saying, yeah, but they're not doing it correctly, which is in, is in violation of our agreements or our policies, I mean, uh, we, the council's in a very difficult position, so, what I'm trying to figure out is, what would be the effect of the delay in, in doing an RFP and potentially have, and potentially selecting a different testing person? What kind of delay would that create?
Yes, if we put a different testing, uh, entity in place right now, we would delay the lists for, um, Fire Captain and Battalion, Fire Battalion Chief, and we would be in violation of our contract if we put a different testing entity in place right now.
So we'd be in violation of the, of the Fire, of the collective bargaining agreement with
For Fire.
For Fire.
Correct.
Okay, what about Police?
For Police Officer, we do not, we're not required contractually to have a Police class in place for entry level Police class. We just chose to move forward with that, um, with that posting because with, um, with a list expiring, um, we don't want to have no list for an extended period of time, because when you go with no list, and then when the numbers dwindle, when you've got retirements and people quitting and et cetera, if you don't have a list by the time they want to have a class, then
Right, but
But contractually, we would not be in, in any problem contractually with Police.
This is what, this is what I'm, I'm just trying to look for a way to maybe resolve some issues, and so, what I'm gathering is we really have to keep, if we keep them in place, so that you can move forward with the two Fire positions that you have.
Yes.
Would you be able then, if we kept this in place, would you be able to, to work with, um, maybe Police, to maybe delay Police until you get that RFP out and issued, so that you can allow a potential new person to handle the one Police position? I, I mean, 'cause you said, I mean, over time you let the list dwindle, I understand that, but you're saying we're, you're putting the RFP together, you're gonna put it out, so we should have another testing, potentially have another testing, um, company in place by the end of summer.
So with the Police Officer position, uh, as Becky said, we're not obligated to have a current list, but we're just trying to get that list put together so that if there's a, a class that's needed, we could, we have a list available to be used. Um, if we were to take down that posting today, um, we can put that posting up later and use a different company. Um, that would be possible if we had enough RFP responses, that would be pushed to a later date. To Becky's point, Police Sergeant is scheduled to be posted later on this year, um, we should be able to have someone in place if we do an RFP early than, enough in the summer.
Yeah, that, so I guess what I'm thinking is, is, I, I think what Lieutenant Fox is saying, 'cause I didn't, I didn't hear Lieutenant Fox talking on behalf of the, of the firefighter positions, you're just concerned with, and I'm gonna call you up in a second, but I guess what I wanted to ask is, it, would it be a possibility for you to say, you know what, why don't we just take the Police posting down right now? Ask the Council to move forward voting on this, approving this for right now, so that you can move forward with the two Fire positions, with the understanding that you're gonna be doing an RFP, so that we hopefully get uh, maybe a different testing agency, at least for Police, because the way you're doing the RFP, you're giving the, uh, you're giving the people that are bidding the ability to just bid on Police, or just bid on Fire, or bid on both. And so that should open up the opportunities for more bidders, which we didn't have the last time we did it.
Correct.
Right? I mean, so I guess what I, what I'm saying, 'cause earlier, we had talked about, you know, if we said no, we were gonna put kind of the city and it, it was gonna be a huge deal, and it sounds like it would be a huge deal for Fire. Would you be able to say, you know what, why don't we just wait on Police? So that we pass this with the understanding that it would just be Fire, and, and tell me if I'm wrong, I mean, I'm really asking
You're not wrong, it's putting Fire on, I'm sorry, putting Police on hold after it's already posted, and, because it is posted right now, and people are scheduled to take a multiple choice exam, and E.B. Jacobs is already engaged in all of that right now, so stopping it kind of midstream is, is really difficult to do. Even though contractually, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be, um, breaking anything contractually, it is really difficult to just stop it, pull it down, and say, wait, we're gonna stop all recruitment efforts, we've got all these things planned, we've got all this stuff going, we've got all these people who have applied, and they're signed up to do these multiple choice exams. Sorry, wait, never mind.
Okay, so you, you currently already have, you said, over nine hundred people scheduled to take
Well, by the end, we've got like six hundred right now, and by the end, typically we'll have about nine hundred.
So if we went ahead and did this, would the, this would be the last
Correct.
Posting before the new RFP, and there would be at least what we're hoping and anticipating a list of different people that are gonna bid on this.
Right.
And you're engaging with, in the RFP, you're engaging with Lieutenant Fox, BPOA, with all of the other groups?
Yes, they would be involved in the entire RFP process, they were involved in the RFP process last time that we went through, through all of this, as were the Unions, Fire Chief, the Police Chief, everyone was involved.
Okay. So, Lieutenant Fox, can I, can I ask you to come up? Hi, so, Lieutenant Fox, well, and I just wanted to make sure that, because I, I understand where you're coming from, and I was trying to maybe bifurcate the, the two, because you understand that we can't vote on something that would violate our contract with Fire, just like we, we wouldn't do that if it was with your contract either. And so I'm not sure, what is your recommendation that we do? Like, what, I mean, with the understanding that this is going out for bid right away, that you're gonna be made a part of, of the process and the RFP, and we're hoping that we're gonna get a much broader range, especially, you know, when I heard that we can, uh, put it out so that there's different companies doing Police and Fire, because there are different companies that specialize in Police and Fire. With that understanding, I, and I understand your problems with how maybe this company has done the testing, and I'm not sure how to fix it at this point, other than do a new RFP. But, again, we have over six hundred people already, do we really wanna delay that? I mean, try, help me with, I mean, I, if you're asking us to vote no when we vote no, the implications of that, I think, are gonna be really bad, but I hope you know that by voting yes, I'm not discounting what you're saying
Yes, ma'am.
in the least.
And, and I'm understanding that, um, and I, I, I'll, I'll agree with, uh, Mrs. Nunley and, uh, Ms. Sanders. Stopping that right now would be catastrophic, and I wouldn't wanna do that to potential candidates that have been waiting for years, two years to, to apply. Uh, at BPOA, we've already created some classes to kinda prep some people too, so we got things in works too, so I totally understand and get that, if, as long as this is the last stop for them, when it comes to E.B. Jacobs, and we go back to the drawing board and try to figure out what's best for uh, the Police candidates, and, and I'm, I'm okay with that, and, uh, again, E.B. Jacobs has been very professional, they have been very open for discussion, they are just unwilling to change their work product, which is not fair, co- coming from us, we don't think it's fair, uh, and so we want it changed. And so if, as long as they can come to the table and be open to change, 'cause they'll talk all day, but they won't change anything.
Well, and then, then my guess is that we're not gonna get them to
Exactly.
necessarily change anything right now either.
Yeah, exactly.
I kind of wish we had somebody from E.B. Jacobs here.
Yeah.
I mean, that's what I wish we had, somebody from EB Jacobs that could give you, I don't, I don't know, at least
Yeah.
in front of all of us, the confirmation.
I've talked to them. I've talked to them before, uh, councilwoman and, and they wouldn't say anything that I haven't heard before, so.
So it really wouldn't have made much of a difference.
No, I don't think it would have mattered. Uh, so, uh, yeah, I, I just, you know, they, again, professional company. I have nothing bad to say about their communication. Um, it's just, it's just not a good fit in my opinion and the OPOA's opinion and the diversity committees who consist of all those, BPOA, LPOA, women's group. This is not a good fit for us and we need to look at a different company. And I'm definitely okay with, and I think everybody else will be okay from that committee saying, hey, we have to move forward with this, uh, current process. But going forward, we have to look at changing it. We have to.
And I think that's where having, having all of you, having your input, I mean, and your group's input on that RFP because, you know, we have what's called lowest and best, right? So on something like this, it's, it's not just the lowest bid, whoever gets the lowest bid. And I think being able to open it up to testing agencies or companies that specialize in, in police, maybe we'll be able to get back to where we were.
Yes.
Um, maybe not necessarily the last company. But with that assurance and putting that on the record and that commitment from HR, I mean, would you be okay with us voting yes on this just so that we don't, well, violate the fire or contract with fire? And I think a no vote would actually, they would have to pull down that post for
Yeah.
the police. And I, that's not what you're asking.
That's not what I'm asking. And hearing that today, I'm glad I came here and heard that. Hearing that today, that's, we would be on the same page with that. That's not something that we want. Um, so I, I agree with what you're saying. As long as those things and those stipulations are put in place to, to move forward and be a little bit, uh, more conscious about who we're, we're offering that, you know, enormous, uh, uh, responsibility to.
Right.
Um, and, and if I may, I just want to clarify one thing too. We were involved in the RFP process last time, but there was really no RFP process.
No, I.
It was, like she said, it was one person, so, uh, you know.
That was our, that was the problem. And I think what they're doing now by breaking it up into being able to bid on just bid on fire, just bid on police or bid on both.
Yes.
I think we're hoping that that'll open up the bidding process. I mean, the other thing is we can, we can put that out and if we don't get it, we can pull it back and look for more too. I mean, I, I hope we don't get in that position
Yes, ma'am.
again, but it sounds like the way they're doing the RFP, that they're planning to do the RFP, we shouldn't have that
Yes, ma'am.
problem. And what, maybe we'll all be watching that very closely. But thank you, Lieutenant Fox. I appreciate you coming down and I, I appreciate, I appreciate the, the information and the explanation in this because it's concerning to me too.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I have nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Melton. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, you know, first let me say, I, I'm surprised that some of the fire, some of the firefighters aren't, aren't here, especially the Fire Union President, uh, Mr. Leclerc, because he was, he was about as upset as anybody about the testing procedure that went on, you know, during this process. Let me ask one question though, Deb. When we do the police officer, and I know we've got six hundred in now, how long is that list? How long do we keep that list?
Uh, it's a good for a year and then we always extend it for a period of another year, so it's a two-year list.
Okay, would it be, if we had, if there were concerns about it? Because see, here's what my concern would be about passing it today. My concern would be that list, if, if, if there were concerns about, especially the beginning testing procedure, you know, for police officers to come on the force and that list is good for, for two years. If you've got a product that many police, fire and others believe is somewhat defective, um, is it possible to create another list or to do another list a year in after you've done, after you've done this one?
Yes, we asked for an extension of that list after it's been in place for a year. So we go to the personnel board to ask for an extension for another year because the process does take months to get through.
Yes.
And we have, and as Lieutenant Fox says, their group, the NAWP, the, the LPOA, they all come together and do recruiting for us. They, they have classes that they put on, um, to help people get through the process. So we, could we do the process again, uh, one year out? Yes, we could.
Okay. Uh, Lieutenant Fox, can I ask you if, would that be okay? Cause that would be my only concern about voting yes. You can come to the mic if you would please. Um, my, my only concern about voting yes for this right now, and I understand the processes and procedures that are in place and what we have to do. I, I've got all that. I just want to make sure that, my concern is that, that if, if we're going to do testing and that testing is going to be done by EB Jacobs, that, that, that list of new recruits should be only good for one year. That, that would be a position that I would want to take because if we had problems with it, and you tell me, if you, if we had, if, if there's, if there, if there's that much concern, and trust me, I've heard from firefighters and police officers and LPOA and BPOA and everybody else that was unhappy with this test, uh, including some deputy chiefs and others on both sides as well. But, um, if we, if, would you be okay, um, if we were to, if that list were to expire after one year as opposed to asking for an extension of two?
Yes, sir. I would, I would be okay with that. If that's something that, uh, you know, you guys in HR felt that was beneficial. I, we, I think we would definitely be okay with that.
Okay, thank you. That, that, that's the only question that I have. Um, Mr. President, uh, you and myself and Mr. Festerson and others were here when we first put these testing procedures in place and we were satisfied with IO solutions at the time. I would be comfortable with making a motion to approve at this point, but subject to the, to, subject to the list for new recruits only being existence for one year.
Okay, we have a number of other lights on.
Okay, I, I won't make the motion now. I just want, that's kind of my position at this point. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Vice President Palermo, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I, I will definitely have to think about Councilman Gray's, uh, motion there. Moving forward, and I, and I appreciate the conversation moving forward because, right, public safety is always number one. So, so should the candidate process. Uh, nobody wants to break, uh, this process and be, uh, liable for a contract that's not approved. But there's also another part of this. There's employees that disagree with this, uh, validation from this company. And, uh, I appreciate Lieutenant Fox being here, obviously HR, but this isn't the first time I've had conversations about EB Jacobs. Um, I think months ago, a, a few of us, including, uh, HR, had been in my office about the, the promotional process of EB Jacobs and how it's questioned because I had a, a captain in my district who was on a list that EB Jacobs forwarded to the city and they did not take that first list. I want to make sure that if we spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or, sorry, two twenty-four, two fifty-eight on a company, that we take what they give us. This is why we hire them. If we're not going to take what they give us, uh, the first go around, then obviously there's some problems. And i- if it's something we can't do in-house with HR and we have to go out like we are with this company or the company moving forward, then that's what we have to do. Um, there's some other things too here that I, I can't dismiss. Um, and regardless of how the process played out or what it was, but I have letters here from groups, LPOA, BPOA, on behalf of the Nebraska Association of Women Police. They are against EB Jacobs. These are our employees. These are the people that when we talk about public safety are out in front. But there's also a couple important, uh, parts here that I haven't heard from, that I truly need to hear from to give you a definite answer if I'm moving forward. I haven't heard from the Police Association. Uh, not on their fault, it's just because this happened so quickly, being in the consent agenda. I also, also haven't heard from Local Three Eighty-Five. I would like to see how they, uh, move forward and, and, and see if we can come to an agreement to, to make this work. Because again, I don't want to be against this contract, but I would rather make the right decision than be held to possible lawsuits. Because again, as I read in here, and I'm not the, the subject matter expert, but I can read and everything mentioned in here is about the Palmer Consent Decree. And I know that there's been some questions about if this has been in the process or not for some of these, uh, candidates testing, and it's not. And I do realize that there's lawsuits that can come about, uh, on one way or the other. There's a lawsuit on the candidate, uh, us being in violation of that. Or there could be a lawsuit, uh, that has to do with HR and legal for this not being in here. So I respect the motion that's already been made. I would make a substitute motion to lay this over one week to hear from them groups that we truly need to hear, uh, from, that we all already haven't heard from, that are against this. And that's what I would need. If I were to vote today, it would be no. Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, uh, motion delay over one week.
Okay, we have a number of lights, so let's kind of get a little further along here. Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll, I'll start with, uh, Deb or Becky, if, if you wouldn't mind, please. I just want to make sure I'm clear on a couple of things. Uh, once a position has been posted and that initial list has been, um, determined or, or created, that is in part by the consultant, in this case Jacobs, helping establish that initial list. And then any subsequent testing along the way would probably have to be, if you're being consistent, have to be completed by that same consultant. Is that correct?
Correct. We'd stay with the same consultant throughout that entire process.
Through that whole process, okay. Um, so that answers the question about, and I think you touched on that earlier about the current list and, and why, why that would be an issue. So let me ask you this. Is it, would it be possible? I don't have the original agreement in front of me, so I don't know what it says as it relates to, um, the option. But is it possible to amend the option, not to be for a period of a year, but for a period of lesser time? So that we could have the RFP out on the street and maybe even award certainly before January first of twenty twenty-one, which is at least in, in the document what it says the expiration of this extension would be?
I'm not, I guess I'm not following your question.
Okay, is it possible to, um, to make the extension for a period of less than twelve months?
With EB Jacobs?
With EB Jacobs?
Um, I would have to ask legal. I, I don't know that sort of question.
Like I said, I don't think, I, you know, we weren't provided with the original contract, so I don't know what the renewal language in there is. I don't know. I'm kind of looking over to law to see if they can weigh in, but I don't know if they've got the agreement either.
Paul, Paul Kratz, City Attorney, I don't have the agreement. I haven't seen it. Usually it's a matter of negotiations between the city and EB, EB Jacobs. They may be willing to do something less. I don't know. It's, may have to contact them.
Would, would we be, um, for bidding purposes, would we be, would the city be in a position to be able to do that? Or would that be considered a new agreement?
Are you, are you stating that before we put it out for bid, that we have to finish with EB Jacobs? Is that your question?
I, I guess what I'm trying to, to figure out is if there is a, a way or a process in which we could extend EB Jacobs for the period of the current list, but get in place a, a process. And again, when we go through the process, I want to make sure everyone understands, if we go through the process, it, it doesn't necessarily eliminate EB Jacobs or, I mean, they, they might still end up with it if we go through that process. You know, it sounds like maybe not, but, um, I think what my goal is, is to if, you know, make a, make a cut sooner than waiting for January first of twenty twenty-one.
I see what he's asking. Basically asking for an overlap of two different companies. One EB Jacobs to continue with the existing list as we go out for an RFP, uh, for the new people. And I think he could do that, again, depending on the agreement with EB Jacobs.
That's basically what I'm asking.
Sorry, I missed that.
That was good timing on that.
I didn't miss that.
I can tell you that EB Jacobs bills us on a monthly basis based upon the work that they have performed. So I, I, again, deferring to the legal department, if we don't start a project with them, they would have nothing to bill us for.
You, you saw my notes. I was just going to get into the billing questions about that. I, I just, I, how is Jacobs paid? And, um, so what are, and since we're sitting here talking about a year extension that goes through January one, twenty twenty-one, we're actually, you know, a quarter of the way through twenty twenty, so I didn't know if, again, if the, if the contract is based just upon an, an annual amount or if it's by the, the actual work performed, um, in their, so it could, the, the amount that we're considering this two twenty-four, two, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is probably an estimate, or I would almost guess an up to amount probably because based upon the, what we have in the pipeline for, for lists.
Correct.
Okay, is that?
That is correct.
Okay, I'm correct on that. Okay.
As they complete work, they bill us.
Okay. Um, so then, um, so th- those were kind of the questions I had. Is it related to a process or figuring out if there's a process to, as, as Mr. Kratz said, maybe have the final, or this list completed by Jacobs, but in the process, put out new RFPs so that uh, we don't necessarily have to have that, uh, relationship if they're not the successful bidder next time going forward to work on the new list. So that sounds like that's a possibility. And then if I could, thank you very much. I'll just, um, Lieutenant Fox, if, if you'd like to come up. It might, it's more probably a comment than, than a question, but, um, I know you and I met last, last fall and you, it, this, this was something of concern of yours, uh, when we first met and talked about some issues. And this was one of the ones that you brought up right away. And I know it's something that you're very committed to and I appreciate you reaching out to us and, and again, um, explaining your concerns about this, um, going forward. And also your willingness to, to work with the diversity community and, and HR to maybe find a, a better way forward. So I appreciate you taking the time to come down and explain your issues and concerns, but also your willingness to find a solution to that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You finished?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Harding. Councilmember Festerson, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. So this is tough because there are legitimate concerns being expressed here and ones that have been expressed before. But the timing of it is difficult as it, as it presents to the city council and, and from a contractual point of view, as has been explained. Maybe a question to have for you. There's been a motion on, on the floor for a one-week layover. There's, there would be no, um, timing concerns with your lists or contractual violations if this was later for one week for further discussion, would there?
No.
Okay. Um, I think I would go ahead and then, and second that motion then. And I, I do agree, um, it has been unusual that the company itself wouldn't be here for this discussion. Maybe they thought this wouldn't be contentious or contested, but I, I find that hard to believe too, given the history on this. So I think they should be here to, for this conversation too and definitely should be here once we get into the RFP situation if they expect to be a successful or competitive bidder. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Festerson. Councilmember Pauls, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Could I have you come up just a second? Yeah. You know, we're, we're talking about testing, so I'm on the outside, uh, listening and I've heard multiple choice test and I heard something about agility. What are, because what we're doing to me right now is committee work. This discussion basically is committee work, uh, but it needs to be done and at least it needs to be done in an open session. Apparently there are some issues that I did not know about. But, so we hired this testing company. Just what are the attributes or what do they bring to the table? What do they do? Just in a simple one, two, three, four. What's, what do they do?
Um, they bring, um, they create valid tests for our, uh, public safety positions, uh, both.
geared towards Omaha or for the body of police work or firework all over? Do they?
For, only for fire and for police, for both.
But what I'm, I'm trying to say, develop around what Omaha needs or just, they just pick and choose questions out and bring in?
Specific to Omaha.
Okay.
Specific to Omaha.
Okay.
Um, they work with subject matter experts, um, in order to create that testing material to ensure that it's valid. Um, they, um, they're the ones who administer assessment centers, um, and compile scores and data and ensure, um, and, and give us the results, um, of all of the, all of the testing.
Okay, so they're providing the test. I'm just going to use a piece of it. They provide the test. They do everything around the test and they hand us the results. That's primarily what they do. Now, the whole system of hiring people. Now, the whole system of hiring people, that is their role.
For police and fire sworn, yes, that's correct.
Okay. So we're hiring a company who comes in with a test that's been generated about what's happening here in the city of Omaha, because those, I'm sure some of those questions would be specific to the city. Do you have any idea, because I smiled on multiple choice questions. I mean, there are ways, for those of you who are into testing research, how you can make those things somewhat invalid. Just give me a, can can you recall a question? I I I know you're not prepared, I'm not trying to trap you either.
No, I I'm sorry, I really can't. I mean, they're, they're, they're all different, specific to the different.
See, so you can make up anything, and I'd believe you.
But they are based on bibliographies that are published for all the promotional tests. So they can't ask any questions outside the published bibliography that is provided per the contract. So they can't just pick any questions out that they want to, they have to concentrate on the information that's given and provided to them.
Okay.
And the subject matter experts that Becky is talking about are people like Lieutenant Fox. He consulted on the lieutenant's examination, and like he said, that's one, you know, he's giving them direction on, you know, you're, maybe this particular or exercise in an assessment center is too broad and it needs to be narrowed down and more focused on these particular areas, which are in line with our particular SOP.
Okay. And I, that's what I'm thinking, I'm surprised, they say they they're uneasy with, that if they had, if the local people had input into this testing, not to the the actual test, but the concepts that go into the test, I would think that would be, they'd be very satisfied with the test if they had some input into that. I mean, wouldn't, if I had.
Well, I'm, I I can't speak for, you know, anyone on on the department or, you know.
Okay. But then how many questions are on one of these tests?
It depends. It depends on how long the bibliography is, it depends on the level of test. I would say, you know, there could be, Lieutenant, there could be, you know, 100 questions.
I'll bring Lieutenant up there, because I should probably, because since he has taken the test.
He has taken the test. I could say that there would, there could be 100 questions on a test.
Okay. So that's what that company does, does the test, gives the results to us, and then, and then, of course, we have other factors that we do too, for example, for a police officer. What are some other things?
For a police officer, we have, they they do the multiple choice exam, and then if they pass the multiple choice exam, then they do a physical agility test.
Right.
And then if they pass the physical agility test, then they do an interview.
Okay, so there's basically three things they must do in order. Okay, thank you. Lieutenant, thank you. Then I'm assuming you did have some input in some of these, the the test?
Yes, sir.
Could you, I I'm just, I mean, because I want the public to understand, can you recall any question that just pops in your mind?
Well, yeah, one question I can say that popped in my mind because it was controversial is, who, who decides if an employee, a police employee wants to not wear a vest because they have a medical reason? Who makes that decision? Is it the deputy chief? Is it the, you know, other positions? That was one question that I do remember being on that test.
And the answer is?
The answer, per the PPM, our policy and procedure manual, is the deputy chief, but actual, like, working knowledge in the department, the chief would definitely have a say-so if if a person can wear a vest or not in performing their duties for liability reasons. So I think that was one of the questions that got kicked out. It was like an invalid question.
Okay. So I'm, that's what I'm talking about, these tests can be valid, especially the multiple choice. Okay, that question, if I answered that wrong, how many, how many can I miss?
I believe the minimum score was a 65, and so, and there was 100 questions.
Okay.
So in order to, for you to move forward, you have to have a 65 or better.
Okay. Which sounds fair, doesn't it?
Yeah, fair.
Okay. I'm just.
Yeah, I I like higher, but that's not my pay grade.
Yeah, I would think, yeah, you probably, well, to move on, you probably have to to score a little higher, don't you? I mean, isn't that part of the rating? Isn't that an issue?
65 or better, yeah, that's it. That was it. And with that being said, sir, we had, I think, 13 people take it, and only seven people pass it. And I I I'm not going to call any of those people that didn't pass not intelligent, these are very intelligent people. It's just the the way that test is created and administered, you know, however they do their rubics or whatever they feel is important, it, you know, wasn't successful for our candidates. And and yes, I do have a part in to play in creating that, not necessarily creating it, but basically saying, I give you the okay to move forward on that. And even if I don't give the okay, they still have the final authority to move forward. So we have some input in, given our, you know, given our opinions about things, but so we have no input on how they score. And that's the issue, is they don't score fairly, in our opinion. And so you can have all the great, the easy questions you want, but if the final scoring is something that we don't feel is fair or or feel is really vague, doesn't matter what the test looked like.
Okay, so a test is developed, and it's apparently valid, because I'm sure they've gone through all the procedures, that once they, then, once they have the test, then you question how they rank you? Is that, I'm just trying to figure out.
Yes, sir. I I question how they, what, what procedures or what guidelines they give the the assessors that come in. I questioned the guidelines that they give them to score. It's not specific enough, and I've talked to an assessor, and I was there, and I talked to the assessor, and they had concerns with not being given specific directions on how to score. And they said, and and I'll quote, one of them said, "So they can just use buzzwords, and if it sounds good, I can score them high." That was said amongst all the assessors. And and in my opinion, that's, I I, you know, that's my concern is, again, they were grading us on a scenario, and they didn't know our policies. And they specifically downgraded me on policies that I said, I verbally said, that I showed, they downgraded because it didn't sound good to them. But they didn't know our policy, and so I had to correct them, and hopefully that didn't pour over into the next day when candidates came in pouring out their heart, and, you know, being, preparing for the last two years and hopefully affecting their family financially and in the department with their leadership. So that, those are my issues with with that company.
Okay, so I'm finding, the testing is okay, it's just how they're interpreting the results.
Uh, to an extent, yes.
Do they just have one person, or do they have several people that looks at it at a test?
I I wouldn't, what do you mean, for SMEs?
Yes.
Yeah, we have several, we have several SMEs that look at it, but we have no input on changing anything. We just say, hey, that's okay, we don't think that's okay, you know, this, this is pertinent, this is not pertinent. We don't have input in creating the questions, we don't have input in, and we shouldn't, I'll be honest with you, we should, we absolutely should not have input in that, but it it's the the way that they word their written tests is is, has been a concern for candidates, and 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 the way that they do the assessment centers and where they, their lack of guidance for the assessors that have no clue. Yeah, they know a broad general existence of of police procedures, but like you said earlier, it's specific to Omaha, and I feel like they need to have specific guidelines to how we do business here and how we police, and they don't have those things, and EB Jacobs isn't willing to give them specific guidelines to make sure that they're being fair and, you know, you know, offering less subjectivity. Because right now, I can give you, I can, I don't know how long you want me to talk, but I can give you an example of.
Go ahead.
Initially with the OPD entry-level candidate, when they first did that testing, it was super broad, and it 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 was, we could make up our own scores, really. Like, we weren't, we weren't told that we have to score within a certain amount. I think the scoring was like from 1 to 5 maybe, and literally an assessor can say, this candidate came in and they scored a 1, which is the worst that you can score, right? You you didn't show favorable responses. Or me, the second assessor, I can score 5. And we're, I'm saying he's the best thing since sliced bread, right? And you're saying he's not. And all we had to do was just say, oh, you scored a 1, I scored a 5. Uh, well, this is why, oh, this is why, and we move forward. I don't think that's acceptable. You got a couple of things that is in put, in play there, either a lack of training on the assessor's side, not knowing what a good candidate is, or you have implicit bias involved. And those are the issues that we have with this, with with the testing process.
Okay. I don't, I don't want to go too deep into, but is this a multiple choice test?
So you have a multiple choice test, which is usually about 24%, and then for for promotional, and then you have a assessment center which is worth 70%. So big bulk of your grade is that assessment center.
Okay, so the assessment center seems to be the weakness, not the actual test.
Both.
Well, I tell you, you're not helping me out here.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to figure out where the issue is, okay.
Yeah, both. Like I said, we have 13 people that took that test, and only seven people passed it. And again, I don't want to call the people that didn't pass it, they're they're not dumb by any means, these are intelligent people that are prepared for this test, and that's an issue.
Well, not everybody's a test taker, I know that for.
I agree.
Okay, okay. Well, if nothing else, this dialogue, at least, I hope people think we're thinking about this.
I do, I do appreciate the conversation, and you guys taking this serious, because it does affect our lives, I know it's, you know, it's just a promotion to some people, but a lot of police officers put years and and a lot of time and effort and family changes and money into trying to prepare to become the best candidate for the city of Omaha. So I do appreciate you guys really talking about this.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Pauls. Councilmember Gray, you're recognized again.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I'm just going to be brief. First of all, I don't, I don't have any problem with a layover, if that's what, if you want to gather some more information, or if you want to hear from some other people, a different perspective on how they see the problem. I don't have any issue with that. The only thing I'm concerned about is that, you know, if at the end of the day, we are going to approve something, that list shouldn't last longer than a year, so that we, so that so that we eliminate even any suspicion that maybe things weren't done as fairly the first time, and now we've got a new, perhaps maybe a new testing entity in town that all of us have been comfortable with in the past, let's say IO Solutions bids again, they were a company that we were all pretty happy with from top to bottom. So, you know, I wouldn't want that list to be in existence more than a year. So rather than go to the personnel board and ask for a year extension, I would prefer that we do another list. But I have no problem, at this point, with a layover if you want to hear from others who may give you a different perspective on what the problem is. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. My perspective is that I don't know that we're going to learn anything in a week by laying this over, but that seems to be what most people are talking about doing, and you're fine with a layover. I think in a week from now, we're probably going to know what we know today, and that is that we have a system that some, because of the history of how the system has worked in the past, has had implicit problems. And there's been a recognition by all that there's been improvement and recognition that there's still work to be done and a willingness to do that work collaboratively, as Ms. Sanders said. So to me, I'm happy to vote with the layover today, but I I'd be surprised if we come back next week and and we learn anything else. So, Madam Clerk, there's a motion and a second to layover for one week?
Yes.
Yes. Councilmember Harding. Thank you. Vice President Palermo suggested the layover, so, and to your point then, I was, wanted to know what we're hoping to find out within the next week then.
Let me just answer.
Council, Vice President Palermo, would you yield to a question?
Yeah, absolutely, and and I appreciate the question. And like I said, I'm further along now than I was at 10:30 because of the issues that have been raised. Again, when we talk about public safety and we talk about those involved, I want to hear from the mass, from the bodies, from the presidents of both unions, to see if there truly is a problem here that, hey, we're willing to violate this contract to get it right. Okay? Because if we're talking a few different positions, but we're talking legalities, because again, read through this, the Palmer Consent Decree. Each and every one of these organizations, it it hasn't been, or maybe up to the standards that it should be through HR, implemented into this process. And that's what I'm worried about. And if we're hearing from all sides saying a week isn't going to matter, I want to make sure that we're covered on all bases over this one week. And if I didn't see this, talking about what this was, then I would probably be okay with moving forward, but since there's some unknown, I need to hear from more people.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmembers Harding and Palermo. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Pauls. Motion to.
Layover one week.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray. Harding. Melton.
Same reasons, same yes.
Motion passed, six to one. Item 62, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group 2020-06 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
The public hearing on item 62 begins at this time, are there any proponents or opponents?
God, there's no public hearing.
Oh. It's just a vote.
Question, Mr. President?
Roll call.
Pauls. Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 63, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal on certain lots in the city of Omaha, group 2020-07 is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Non-action items, item 64 through 72, do not require public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Question, Mr. President?
And a reminder to wash your hands. Roll call.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.[1760.66]